Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, October the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, four P. M., Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McClusser, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Ms. Eames?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Moving to item three. Is, are there any items to be added to the agenda? All right. If not hearing any, we move to item four. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Tucker. I get a second. Second by Ms. Eames. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. We good, Ms. McClusser? It won't come up?
It is not showing anything.
I don't have anything anywhere.
All right, hold on. All right, do you have it now?
There you go. Yes, I've got it.
All right, that passes.
All right, motion carries. For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors Business Meetings. Please remember that, that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It's not a question and answering session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outburst or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in offending person removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens' sections of the night's business meeting. Presentation five A. Got the Pennsylvania County United Way presentation by Ms. Gordon. Welcome.
You might have to pull that up a little bit. Yep, adjust it however you need it.
Flip the switch.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you information about the United Way of Danville, Pennsylvania County. I've left for you at your place our two thousand twenty-two annual report along with a RAC card sharing our, connecting our community four focus areas. And on the other side are the current supported agencies and programs that we have. This year, united in purpose is our theme, and I want to share some data with you if you will incline. I'm hitting down. Okay, apologize. Please tell me. United in Purpose, we give kids an equal chance by providing guidance and tools for new parents, access to free books and reading, meaningful after-school programs. So some of our supported agencies through our grant process are providing these in the community, Danville and Pennsylvania County. United in Purpose, we build strong, healthy communities, providing funding for transportation to assist seniors, relief for disaster victims. United in Purpose, we help our neighbors become self-sufficient individuals with physical and mental disabilities to maintaining employment and legal aid services. United in Purpose, we support read, educate, work, and get healthy Dan River. These are our four focus areas which are listed on the RAC card I left with you. Read Dan River that all students will read at grade level by third grade. Educate Dan River for middle and high school students to receive supportive services they need for on-time graduation. And those services can include help with absenteeism, help with suspension, understanding the risk that they are getting involved with to not meet their on-time high school graduation. That's important for Danville and Pennsylvania County schools today. Work Dan River, all residents are financially stable and able to provide a safe and healthy living environment for themselves and their families. And get healthy Dan River, all individuals have basic needs met to maintain a health and wellness across the lifespan. Read Dan River also includes one of our programs, Dolly Parte Imagination Library. So Read Dan River is for children zero to five through Dolly Parte Imagination Library, and then some of our other programs that we fund for elementary school children to meet that third grade reading level. Dolly Parte Imagination Library is a grant-funded program, providing families an opportunity to register their children to receive one book a month at no cost to the family. There is cost for us, so we write grants to fund that program. Today, we currently have grant funding to reach a thousand children, and today we have nine hundred and twenty-six children registered. So by the end of two thousand twenty-three, we want to have met the needs of a thousand children and meet the needs of those families. A student, a young person will graduate out of Dolly Parte Imagination Library when they're five, and at that time they're in public schools or have access to libraries. Glass for Good is an initiative with Owens, Illinois. Glass that's recycled in the city, the revenue from that comes back through Glass for Good to United Way. And today, the United Way of Pennsylvania County Board of Directors had determined that those funds would go to Danville, Pennsylvania, cancer. Transition Stop is a program with Danville Public Schools to provide supplies to students who are identified close to homelessness, so we can provide them with clothes and school supplies. So some of our programs are provided through grants, and some of our programs are provided through workplace and individual giving. We like to track, and that's the model of United Way, that we track the impact, that the dollars that are raised, that are given through our grant program, they're meeting, the, not the supported agencies are meeting the needs that they required when they wrote their grant. So in the annual report, you'll see under each four focus area how we determine that area and how we track that impact. So United in Purpose is a theme. Today, we are serving Danville and Pennsylvania County. We support Pennsylvania County Schools Book Buddies Program. We also have with Danville Church and Community Tatorial Program, have four sites in Pennsylvania County. We also serve through the other nonprofits that are listed on there. They don't discriminate whether it's city or county. If there's a need for homelessness, the House of Hope Homeless Shelter helps them. Domestic violence is important, that we meet the needs of those families as well. So I wanted to just take some time and let you know, Danville, Pennsylvania County, serving over a hundred years in the community, want to just raise the awareness for you and for citizens and let you know we are united in purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Any comments or questions for Ms. Gordon?
Good job, Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to five B. Additive Manufacturing, Mr. Telly Tucker. Good evening, Mr. Tucker.
Good evening. Members of the Board Supervisors, thank you all for the opportunity to come and share a little bit with you all about some of the happenings at, at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research. So I'll try to very quickly take you through a few slides, and I'm talking specifically about two programs today. One is the ATDM Program, Accelerated Training and Defense Manufacturing Program. And the second is the Additive Manufacturing Program, which last week we had a summit, we hosted some six hundred people. Thank you for those of you who were able to attend. I think you saw just the impact for the region in terms of people all over the nation are talking about what's happening in Danville, Pennsylvania County. We're certainly proud of that, and we are seeing all kinds of interest and investment, and I think your economic development staff will tell you that there's been increased interest in prospect activity as a result of, of some of the new partnerships that we have. So very quickly, a lot of people have been asking, what's this ATDM thing all about? Accelerated Training and Defense Manufacturing? So what is it? It's a fast-track accelerated training program that's designed to teach anyone with a high school education or a GED in four months how to get baseline set of skills to work in one of five areas: welding, machining, metrology, or what we call quality control, additive manufacturing, which is also known as three D printing, or non-destructive testing. So anyone can come to us without any experience whatsoever. We put them in an apartment for four months and, and help train them for four months, and then at the end, on the back end of that, we help place them in the job for anyone in the defense industrial base. And a lot of people ask, well, what's the defense industrial base? Defense industrial base is hundreds of companies all over the nation that build a component that ends up on a, on a, on either a submarine or a surface ship. So for example, in our region, Entwistle is a company that builds components that ends up on a Navy ship. Fast Tech as well, which is a tenant, actually in one of our rapid-launch spaces. They are a company that builds components that end up on ships. And also Piedmont Precision, which is, is a machine shop in the community in, in I believe in Airside Industrial Park, they are now qualified to do, to build components that end up on ships. So these are just a few examples of companies in the region that are doing this, but nationally there are hundreds of companies. So these students come to us, they train for four months, and then we help place them in a job. And I mentioned they train in one of those five areas that, that I just mentioned. They earn industry credentials. These students are registered at DCC while they are on our campus training. So DCC gets credit for the credentials that they earn. It's a benefit to the community college as well as to the region. Similarly, we often walk prospective industry. If a, if a client, an economic development prospect is coming in the region, we can walk them through the training facility, and they're able to see where they can hire talent and how we were able to pivot to create a, a customized program for industry. And so it's really valuable when we're marketing things like the Megaside or, or any of our industrial parks for prospective activity. Also, existing industry, they often come and look and, and hired some students from the program. These are some pictures from the labs right now. This is the, what we call the bridge solution, and this is the additive manufacturing lab. I'm going to talk a little bit more about additive later in terms of how that's different from traditional, what we call subtractive manufacturing. Okay, but these are some images. This is the non-destructive testing lab that's in the Cintec building on our campus. This is the welding lab that's, that's in the Cintec building on our campus. Has twenty-four welders in there. Each class size is twelve students, and they have one instructor and one technician for every twelve students. So really, it's a six-to-one student-teacher ratio, and students get the individualized attention they need, but also get as much time as they can on machines every day. This is our metrology lab on our campus. This is in the Hawkins Building. And what this is doing, these are some anecdotes. So I'll just share one of these with you. There was a forty-year-old unemployed female from Corpus Christi, Texas. I believe she was working at a Sheetz gas station. She had no manufacturing experience whatsoever, but she was Googling online one day and saw something about ATDM. And so she talked to her fiance and said, I think I'm going to get on a train and, and go to Danville to do this ATDM program. Well, he said, well, I'm not letting you go without me, and so he got on a train too. Four months later, they both were, are now employed as metrologists at Newport News Ship Building in Newport News. So this is an example of somebody who may have been making, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, is now probably making forty to fifty thousand dollars an hour. So it, this is a transformational program for any student who is interested in going through it and completing it. We have been charged by the Department of Defense and the Navy to train eight hundred to a thousand people per year. The only way we can train eight hundred to a thousand people per year is in a new building because we don't have space on our campus. So just last week on Wednesday, we celebrated a groundbreaking on this new facility. It's going to be a hundred thousand square feet. It's located just next door to the Center for Manufacturing Advancement in Cyber Park, and I want to take a special moment to thank you all and your, the members of, of the RIFA for approving a ground lease for IALR to, to partner with the DOD to build this facility. Without your partnership, we could not have done that. And Chair Dalton, thank you for coming and speaking at that, at that ceremony last week. This is expected to be, phrase one is expected to be completed by the end of two thousand twenty-four, and the complete building is expected to be completed in two thousand twenty-five. Okay. Before I move on, happy to answer any questions. If anybody has any questions about ATDM, if not, I'll move into additive manufacturing. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. We're good.
So there's been a lot of discussion, and you maybe have heard additive manufacturing. Our young people refer to it as three D printing. So if you've seen a three D printer, it's in the middle schools, at the GO Tech Middle Schools in, in the county. It's also at the Pennsylvania Career Tech Center. They have three D printers there. And so the, the way I can describe it as traditional subtractive manufacturing, you start with a block of metal, and you cut away all the excess metal that you don't need until you get to a component part that you can then use. With additive manufacturing, instead of starting with a block of metal, you start with either a powder or wire, and you actually kind of grow the part from the ground up. So if you're thinking about wire, it starts almost like welding, and you weld the wire up from the ground until you get to that same component. And then after that, it's a machine now to, to fine tune it. With the powder, they use lasers to, to get the, these are metal powders. They, the metal powders adhere together to form the same part. And so depending on which part it is, they might use a metal additive manufacturing process, a wire process, or they might use a powder process. And I've got some images here that help with that. We are doing additive training as part of ATDM, but we're also home to the United States Navy Center of Excellence for additive manufacturing. Now, why on earth would the Navy decide, we're four and a half, five hours from any water? Why would they decide to put this in the middle of Danville, Pennsylvania County? Glad you asked that question, because I often wondered it too. Well, what they saw was the region had invested so heavily in all these workforce development programs, and many of the leaders who sit around the dais today have made decisions to invest in training programs that start all the way back in middle school and high school and have, go on to the community college and, and at the institute. They said, this community really understands and gets what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to support our United States military and our Navy by not only training people, but we also are trying to help them develop new technology like additive manufacturing to help build parts and components for ships quicker, cheaper, and more durable. So what we were hearing from some of our sailors were, they might be out at sea and something breaks on a ship, it might take them six to nine months to get a replacement part because of the backlog of the supply chain. So what the DOD and the Navy want to do is they want to teach people how to, and they want to teach sailors as well as folks working in industry, how to build things additively so that you could actually put some three D printers on ships. There are already some on surface ships out there. So when something breaks at sea, instead of it taking six to nine months to replace it, they can actually three D print a replacement part and have it done in maybe a week or a month tops. Similarly, if industry adopts additive manufacturing, which is the future of manufacturing, they can, we, one of the things we've been charged to do is to qualify companies to start doing more additive manufacturing. Well, as we've thought about whether this makes sense for, for Danville, Pennsylvania County, we, we've been asked the question, well, where will industry, industry who wants to learn more about how to additive manufacture, where will they go? My mind tells me they will want to be close to the, to the well of where the Center of Excellence is, because that's where we've got some of the brightest engineers in the United States working on how to, how do you do this in partnership with the Navy. Similarly, they'll want to be close to where the training talent is, is a program like ATDM that's training additive manufacturing. And I know that we have some active prospects already that are looking at being somewhere in the region because of this center right here. These next couple of slides I'm going to show you, I borrowed from Don Hairston, who's, he presented at the conference last week, but I know some of you weren't able to be there, but it really illustrates in a, in a very plain and simple way why the Center of Excellence is transformational, not only for Danville, Pennsylvania County, but for the entire nation. So this diagram right here, he uses the analogy of grandma's cookie recipe. And so the raw materials in a cookie recipe might be sugar, or flour, or baking soda, et cetera. The equipment that's used is the oven. What they call a tech pub is your recipe. And then obviously grandma has technical know-how, right? She puts it together, she bakes it, and then on the, on the end, you get a delicious cookie, right? That's the quality. Well, how does that apply to a additive manufacturing process? So in additive manufacturing, our raw material is a powder or a metal wire that I mentioned. The equipment that they use are these three D printers, and they come in all shapes and sizes. The tech pubs are the recipes that we are using to, 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 to tell other manufacturers, how do you build a, an additive part? Here's the, the material you use, here's the machine you use, here's the temperature they need to do it, the speed you need to do it, and then on the back end, here's how you machine it until its final form. We test it, we do the metrology quality assurance testing and the non-destructive testing as well, all within the Center for Manufacturing Advancement. And basically, what we're telling industry is if you do, if you do these steps and you follow this particular recipe, at the end of the day, you will have a part that's qualified to end up on a Navy ship. So the objectives you'll see in this slide really are articulated, and we are trying to do a number of things. The ATDM students will have an opportunity to learn on real Navy parts. We are resolving technical issues and reducing the amount of time that it takes for a new part to end up on a ship. We are helping support the standardization of additive manufacturing. This is a much, much faster, rapid-response capability, and then we are enabling companies that want to learn how to do additive manufacturing to do that. So so far, in seven months that we've been, been doing this additive manufacturing in the CMA, we have thirty unique printed parts. We've released, released what we call TDPs or Technical Data Package, that's the recipe. We've released twenty-eight of those. We've reviewed more than twelve thousand parts, five hundred of which are in print queue right now, they're being printed. We have nineteen machines, all that are in the Center for Manufacturing Advancement, more than three hundred and twenty hours of related curriculum instruction for the ATDM students, and we've activated four suppliers. On-site, there are thirteen employees to date. They all average salaries more than twice of the average prevailing wage for the region. And this is just the beginning. We expect to have more than forty to fifty employees working on additive manufacturing in this Center of Excellence when we're at full operational capacity by next year. So one of the things that's really an opportunity for us is there's only one United States Navy Additive Center of Manufacturing, I'm sorry, Additive Manufacturing Center of Excellence. There's only one in the United States, that's right here in our region. There's only one national training program, Accelerated Training and Defense Manufacturing Program, right now, that's in our region. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to take advantage of something that is unique to this region, a new technology like additive manufacturing. When you couple that along with everything else that this region has to offer, workforce, sites, business climate, et cetera, all the, all the, the competitive advantages that our economic development teams market every day, we have an opportunity, and we are putting together in partnership with all the economic developers, a strategy on how do we attract companies so that we become the United States Center of Gravity for additive manufacturing? Because we know that this opportunity won't last forever, and there will be other communities who try to emulate what we already have. So we are doing our best to try to strategize on how do we take advantage of this opportunity while we're here today, and we should have a marketing plan completed before the end of this calendar year. We'll be sharing that. Obviously, our, our economic developers are involved in helping work with our consultants that are working through that. And then they'll be using those marketing ideas to help attract prospective industry and help existing industry that want to get into additive manufacturing grow. So that completes my presentation for today. Happy to answer any questions or provide additional context.
Any questions, Mr. Tucker? Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tucker, thank you for coming today. I was at the I was at the function last Wednesday, and very, very impressed, and I was very impressed. I heard a lot of folks saying that you're doing a good job over there, so keep it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Telly, likewise, thank you for coming, and I was there, and, you know, I thought I knew a little bit about the program, but it blew me away, to be honest with you. And I did have a couple of questions. As far as the students, can you tell us what the cost is to them and who pays for it?
So currently, we're in a pilot, so we're still identifying the exact cost per student. What I would say is, we are, we provide four months of housing, we have a housing allowance that's covered by the Department of Defense, it's a scholarship of up to $1,200 per month. So if you look at the housing piece, it's about $400 to $800 for them to stay. The cost of the training and the job placement is, hasn't been defined as uniquely yet because we are not at full scale. So, we will achieve economies of scale when we get to 800 to 1,000 graduates per year. But in, right now, we've had to hire a bunch of staff, so we have probably 40, I would say about 45 employees who work on the Manufacturing Advancement Team that are supporting these two programs, between instructors and technicians, student support specialists, recruiters, job placers. So it would be unfair to take all of that cost and say, okay, it costs X amount to train, because right now, we're only at about 200 students. When we take that total figure and stretch it across 1,000 students, we'll have a truer estimation of what the cost is per student. But, but what I would say is, it's on par with a college education. So, and right now, it's 100% covered by the Department of Defense and the Navy. Students don't pay anything during their time with us. The only thing they're responsible for is their food, and we take care of transportation, housing, and training.
I might be on the wrong TV channel, but it would be wonderful to see a bunch of commercials to promote what you guys do, because a lot of people simply don't know. And it's phenomenal, and very thankful for what you guys do. Okay? Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I will share, if any of you happen to be watching a ballgame or NASCAR race, if you've seen a commercial that says, buildsubmarines.com, those have been running. Those are actually, if you go to buildsubmarines.com and enter your information, we end up getting that lead. So, we partnered with NASCAR driver Brad Kozlowski and RFK Racing, and so on their cars, you see buildsubmarines.com. Next year, they will put A T D M on their cars. They're going to, I think it's a four-year partnership with Kozlowski Racing, and they are going to be doing a national advertising campaign. Similarly, about, of our, I think we've had 268 graduates today, about 130 of those are Virginia folks. And we have some folks now who are actually from Danville, Pennsylvania County region, who are in the program today. And this program isn't for everybody, right? This is an eight-hour-a-day, it's really intense. So we like to describe our students as mature learners, somebody who's mature enough to handle that. We, there are other students who say, I'd rather take the traditional community college route and do, you know, one or two-year program where I can go attend class maybe one Monday, Wednesday, Friday for a couple hours. But for somebody who needs to work sooner than later, and they need a job within four months, this is a program that they can, an option they can have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Tell me, Mr. Della?
I don't really have a question, but as you always do, you've shown a lot of humility and been real humble tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and give a little bit of history about this. I think we got to give kudos, as you did a little bit earlier without being specific, to Pennsylvania County School System, who was the first one to step out and say, we'll go that route and listen to you guys and implemented the program at VOTEC, and that was under the leadership of James McDaniel all the way back to 2013. You know, we've had a few business leaders who choose to fly under the radar that have been heavy supporters in a lot of ways, lot of ways, to make this program get off the ground all the way back to even before 2013, because they were the ones talking to the school system. And somewhere around 2018, because I happened to be on the Board of Supervisors then, and Chairman, I remember you and Troy Simpson going to Washington DC and really meeting and turning over a lot of rocks and all to get this initiative going. And you're not going to take any pats on the back personally, but I'm going to give you some tonight, because, you know, it wasn't politicians and elected officials that got us to where we are, it was the private sector and some really hard workers that saw a vision. And you were certainly one of them in the forefront of getting out there, Mr. Tucker, and doing that. And I said about another matter back in 2018, that in my book, you were a Hall of Famer when it comes to economic development. I'm going to say it again, tonight, in my book, you're a Hall of Famer on your management skills and what you're doing for the Institute for Advanced Learning, and what you've done for this region. And I also want to thank publicly Troy Simpson for everything he's done to get this program going. I remember a time when you and I've had some discussions, and I was trying to figure out, you know, how in the world is this going to really be something that's going to be really overly beneficial to Pennsylvania County? Because the housing, they were coming in, they were leaving, but as I have listened and learned over the years, I realize that it's, it really truly is the golden egg laid by the goose. And I appreciate you guys going out there and doing it. When you talk about having 40 to 50 staff members right now, they're working here. They got families here already. So, you know, it's just wonderful for our region, it's putting us on the map, it's going to open a lot of other doors. And I hope everybody out there tonight, listening and reading, will reach back and take the time to give both economic development teams we have in place now, but especially you and Troy in our school system. I know Mr. McDaniel's retired now, but that was supported by their board too, and Dr. Jones was, I believe he was working in instructions or something at that time too, so he was behind that. So, again, just thank you for everything you've done, and I know I've said that to you on the side, but I wanted to say it publicly because Telly Tucker has been huge for this region, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I love this region. People ask me why I came back from Arlington, Northern Virginia, and it's because of getting to work with people like you all, and people who care about making a difference for the people's region. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve, continue to serve the people of this region.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, for everything you do. Appreciate it. Moving to item 5C, revised scope of smart scale project. Mr. Kradek.
Welcome, sir. Good afternoon. Wanted to bring you all the latest news on the tight squeeze intersection improvement project. As you remember, back at the July work session, Chris Winstead, our district engineer, and Mandy Cox, the project manager, came down and presented to you all a revised scope of work. After the public involvement process made it very clear that folks weren't interested in the R-cut that was originally proposed. So the revised scope really hasn't changed since that July presentation that was given to you all. What has changed is, since then, we held an additional citizens information meeting. So on September 21st, we had another citizens information meeting over at Chatham High School. 15 people attended, and we ended up getting 16 comments. So somebody commented that didn't attend, because that was an option as well. And 100% of those 16 comments were in support of the project. So that's good news. We think the public involvement process worked just like it's supposed to, and we think we have a solution that everybody can live with. So if you all wish to proceed, or want us to proceed with the revised scope, we would just need a resolution from you all at the business meeting tonight. And do you have any questions about the particulars of the project? Like I said, nothing, nothing changed from the July meeting, but if there was anything you all were unclear about, I'd be happy to explain.
Any questions? Anything for Mr. Kradek? Good? No, everything I've heard has been good. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was all I had.
All right. Thank you.
And that resolution is on your consent agenda tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Kradek.
Thanks.
Moving to item 6, staff committee and constitutional office reports. 6A, regional economic development presentation. Mr. Rowe.
Welcome, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Wanted to come and give you an update on the regional economic development plan. I know that, you know, Dr. Fawcett had come and really kind of given an overview of the subsection plan for the county that will ultimately be incorporated into the overall broader regional plan. And timing of this right now is really important. Any unbiased observer driving through our community right now can clearly see that we are truly going through a transformation. And so, this transformation, you know, has started, you know, several years ago, and these types of projects that are announced frankly just take time of building buildings, hiring people. And so now you're kind of starting to see this point of where we're, you know, have now reached, of where we really need to update this regional plan again, because the last time we did this was back in 2016, then we did it in 2019. And so again, things are happening at such a fast clip that really everything from our target industries to the actual demographics that we're seeing throughout the county are quickly changing. So, just really wanted to give you a, an update on where we are, where we're going, and how this all fits into the, to our broader strategy. So for the, you know, regional strategic economic development plan inputs, at the end of the day, the regional plan is the umbrella. And so within that, of course, you know, we have our partners, being the county, the city of Danville, the Southern Virginia Regional Alliance, the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, and Telly and his team, the Danville, Pennsylvania Regional Industrial Facility Authority, the Stanton River Regional Industrial Facility Authority, and the Danville Regional Foundation. And that's a heck of a team to have, I can tell you. And so, you know, we certainly expect a really good outcome and product from this, from this effort. And then within that, you know, you do have these, you know, what I call the stool legs of the stool, so to speak. And so then, of course, you have the subplan sections, which is the Pennsylvania County portion, and the inputs that are going into that plan that ultimately are going into the decision-making factors of strategy and regional plan. And then, of course, the same with the Danville Plan Section. And then, you know, within the county's demographic areas that we're really trying to identify, for example, we're trying to get data on planning for targeted geographic areas as far as focused growth areas, in addition to talent and attraction retention and analysis. And that's a very broad category. That's where you're looking at housing, you're looking at the quality of life components, and all of these inputs, again, are going into this broader regional plan and strategy. And then our, you know, our peers and our neighbors and colleagues, partners from the city of Danville are doing likewise for the items that they've identified. We've already kicked this off at the regional level with a market study, so we've already gotten next move group under contract. This is extremely important. It's important because our last market study for this area was done back in 2016. So for example, that previous market study identified as core key sectors, advanced materials and wood products manufacturing and textiles, advanced textiles as our key target areas. And frankly, we as a region have really gone up to a different level as far as in the hierarchy of economic development and the skill sets. And so we'll show you that, and that, we're seeing that real time with actual projects and inquiries. And so that will have a tremendous impact, not only on Pennsylvania County, the city of Danville, our region. And when we say region, we're looking, you know, really within the labor sheds of Southern Virginia, Northern, North Central, North Carolina, but also, of course, with a major impact and focus on the Southern Virginia mega site and what's going on there. So this is really what we're seeing, you know, in real time, and that we expect our market study to, and the plan to really focus on. You just heard a great presentation from, from Mr. Tucker on the A T D M program and how additive manufacturing is really transforming how industry is manufacturing products to this day, right? Active manufacturing is all about pretty much replacing what has historically been made by forged product methods. And so again, you know, you're additive and then you're subtracting from it. And so an offshoot of that that we're seeing right now is advanced materials. Anybody who's following our National Defense knows that critical minerals are of key importance to our nation's security. And so, there's been a tremendous amount of announcements regarding battery plants, for example, but there hasn't really been a lot of thought given up to this point about the critical minerals that go into batteries, mainly being graphite, cobalt, these other very unique minerals. And so we're getting a lot of interest from clients in these sectors. Again, additive and subtractive precision machining itself, and so that kind of goes into that critical minerals of exotic alloys and the powders that go in with that, and the heat treatment. And then, of course, automotive and EV battery that oftentimes gets the headlines. Electronics, semiconductor, and data storage, we have very high location quotients for those industries, meaning that we are very well-suited for them from a supplier standpoint. Food and beverage, of course, we're seeing that real time of Tyson Foods and Arrow Farms and some other projects that are coming along the pipeline. And, and, you know... And so again, doing value-add agriculture, wood products, and life sciences is of utmost importance. And then one thing that I think that we honestly need to do a better job of in the county is really finding ways to, you know, really create flexible small business and entrepreneurship programs. And so this is something that I think that will be very important as we continue to, you know, really bring back our main streets, the towns of Gretna, the town of Chatham, and the town of Hurt. And so again, these are really kind of the focus areas that we're looking at. So key elements and considerations for a plan, this is a busy slide, but I really wanted to kind of walk you through what it is that we're selling to clients and what really frankly is working in our sales pitch and really resonates with clients. And so very quickly, we really go into, okay, what makes this area special and unique? And so we know the areas that we're geographically competing against, we know the metros, we know the demographics of those individuals, it's very data-driven. And so at the end of the day, it really comes down to, yes, our low cost of doing business, and that's across the spectrum from housing to buying a loaf of bread, gallon of milk to buying fuel at the gas pump. You know, we have an 18% lower cost than the national average, that goes up to 35-plus percent when you go to select markets, so you kind of know now where we're going geographically to recruit. But the thing that really separates us is our extraordinary workforce manufacturing programs. So Mr. Warren was exactly right, the county started this program really with Angela Rigney and others at that time, along with Greg Sides, you know, kicking that off in the vocational schools, and now that program has really blossomed throughout all of Southern Virginia. And then we start to really focus on the, you know, the quality of our transportation routes. We all take it for granted, but a mile per minute is not the norm throughout the state. And so again, you may have interstate quality roadways in Northern Virginia, but you're sitting there for 10-plus minutes to go the equivalent of half a mile. And so again, clients understand that. And then really looking at the labor shed components. That's where I think that we've done a really good job since 2019, is understanding that companies don't look at county or jurisdictional boundaries, they look at where employees are willing to drive from. And so what you see is, is that... And so, what you see is, is that oftentimes here, you know, this, this notion of, well, you know, we, you know, we're not an urban area, we don't have the people, whatever, you know, what the case may be. But if you're a company and, you know, you typically are looking at a sixty-minute drive time, our actual labor data is stronger than that of, you know, the labor data of the city of Lynchburg, the city of Roanoke. And so, you actually are looking at a labor force of over five hundred and forty-one thousand people. And within a forty-five-minute drive time, for example, of the mega site, you're looking at over five percent per year growth. And so, again, you know, this area is continuing to grow. And then, finally, just from a population standpoint, right? Everybody wants to know that the drive time as far as on a daily drive, you really can't do a better job than where we are here in Southern Virginia. You can reach over sixty percent of the US population and two-thirds of the manufacturing base of the US. So, the places that we typically are competing against Jacksonville, Savannah, they do a cute job of marketing by saying that they're within a two-days' drive of seventy-five percent of the US population. So, again, these are factors that will certainly be looked at. You know, really kind of piggyback, piggybacking on, on what, you know, Mr. Tucker was going over, you know, our workforce programs are exceptional, they're second to none. You know, we've traveled around the globe, you have folks that are coming in and benchmarking themselves on what you're doing. And so, just in Danville and Pennsylvania County alone, you've invested now over ninety-eight million dollars into these, these workforce programs. And that's, you know, local funds, our partners' funds, state funds, federal funds. And so, there's not many communities that can really emulate that. And as you know, it starts in the middle school career connections and then has an, really, a, you know, a, an industrial pathway to a job from the middle schools into the high schools and into the community college where they're literally getting industrial certification and dual credits. So, again, that really helps students out, getting the skill sets that they need, but also frankly reducing student debt. And, you know, we have really identified these areas by listening to industry on what they need. So, for example, you heard about the additive machining and the subtractive machining through precision machining programs. Then you also have mechatronics and industrial control, which was extremely important to Tyson Foods, for example, was very important to a lot of our plastics manufacturers. And so, getting into that automation and robotics component, very important. And then, having capstones in all of these programs, a great example being what occurs at the Gene Haas Center for Integrated Machining. And then, I have to applaud this region as, as Mr. Tucker mentioned, you know, the new Center for Manufacturing Advancement, what's happening there with Lights Out Manufacturing is, is exceptional and that's really where industry is going. And then, of course, the plan really highlighting what's happening with that Department of Defense component. We are certainly seeing a lot of prospects regarding the Accelerated Training for Defense Manufacturing Program and what's going on with that momentum. And so, again, we want to ensure that those eight hundred to a thousand people that are coming through there every year, it's not a situation where Mr. Tucker mentioned of where they're going to Newport News to get a job, but they're, they're staying right here in Danville in Pennsylvania County to get a job. And so, we hope to have some news regarding that coming up shortly that will, you know, show that that strategy is paying off. And then, the thing that most people here don't realize or understand is, is that we as a community and as a region, and this really occurred after 2017 when we were finalists for the Toyota Mazda Project, we were just not ready. But it forced us to be much more regional and broader in our strategy and marketing plan. But we have over three thousand individuals between the ages of sixteen and twenty outside of the ATDM program that are getting industrial certifications and degrees. That number is exceptional. And so, again, there may be other metros that have larger numbers of actual bodies, but the take-home message is, is that we do more with our people in these core skill sets than those other communities do. And so, for, to give you an example, the Limestone County, Alabama site where Toyota ended up going, they were highlighting that they had about seventeen hundred students in their advanced manufacturing pipeline. So, again, your numbers are absolutely off, off the chart. And just adding what is occurring through the Accelerated Training for Defense Manufacturing Program, and my humble opinion, is pretty much like putting in a small college into your community, right? Companies don't really care about how many folks are enrolled, they care about the output, about how many bodies are coming out. And so, if you were to look at that, it probably seriously is the equivalent of having another three thousand-person enrollment college in your community. So, it's a big deal. And then, finally, you know, this region has a plethora of engineering talent. So, we, within a ninety-mile ratio, or radius around us, we have about nine thousand engineering graduates that come out of our schools every single year. That's a tremendous number. There's, there's only probably one other metro that I know that has numbers close to that and that's Phoenix in Arizona with Arizona State. And that's why you're seeing the momentum that they have there. And then, of course, the key driver that we see really driving the region forward is the Southern Virginia mega site. The site is completely infrastructure ready at this point, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-plus acres of graded pad. As you all know, we've been finalists and, and more in certain instances on various projects there. And so, again, you know, we're, we're very much poised for success there. And so, with that, I was going to turn really into the economic current situation that we're seeing that's really kind of driving this transformation and I think this need for an update. And so, in Danville and Pennsylvania County since 2018, we've announced over one-point-two billion dollars of investment in projects and now we're actually closing in on over forty-three hundred jobs. And frankly, the board members that are sitting up here, many I've been working with for a long time, you guys have really gotten a, a, a ground floor view of this and have been intricately in part, you know, involved in part of this. So, yeah, I sincerely thank you for that. But just to give you a, you know, a sense, this is just Kane Creek Industrial Park alone. Everything that's in the park now has pretty much been brought in since 2018, but Morgan Olson, Ball Robben, Arrow Farms, Tyson. What this shows you is great companies, but also, I think also shows you that it's a diverse portfolio. I don't think anybody wants us to go back to being a one-industry town. And so, again, this shows you that the skill sets that you've been able to develop through your workforce programs are paying off. And the Cyber Park, again, a great groundbreaking last week for the, the new Center of Access and Training there with the US Navy. But then, of course, as you also know, Zoner Electronics doing a project there and we're working on several others as well. And so, you know, this park rapidly becoming, you know, as to its saturation point. And then, this has taken a little bit of time, but I think that we've been able to, you know, really find good marketing messages, for example, for what I call some of our northern industrial parks, so Gretna Industrial Park, right? We've had two project announcements. Amthor currently is waiting on their DEQ permit for, you know, to actually begin breaking ground there and the steel's ready to be delivered to the site already. And so, that should be anytime now. And then, of course, Traysman Trucking's going back through the environmental permitting process for their facility. And then, we're hopeful to be in a position here before the end of the year to, to, you know, possibly announce another project there. Brazville Industrial Park, you know, we have a project that selected that site, we're working through details there. And then, of course, Stanton River Plastics at the Stanton River Regional Industrial Facility Park up there in Hurt. And then, again, those folks are in the facility as we speak, upfitting that building. And then, even right here in, in Chatham here, the Chatham Industrial Park with Eastern Panel Manufacturing. So, again, we're seeing this across the board. And that just doesn't even take into account what's happening at the Southern Virginia mega site. And so, again, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, news clippings that come out of there. But, you know, I think it's really important for folks to understand that we're not staying still on this site, we're continuing to move forward with its development. So, again, the highest certification from the state, now, you know, Quest Site Solutions Certified, which is the premier private certification that you can get. And so, folks often ask, well, you know, how much is in the mega site? And so, I think this is very important for citizens to understand, but in this strategy of this transformational industrial, you know, and advanced manufacturing strategy that we have, you know, you have over two-hundred-and-ninety million dollars invested. And about two-hundred-and-six million of that is in the actual site itself. Now, let me be clear with that, thirty-three million dollars of those funds over the past roughly fifteen years have come from Danville in Pennsylvania County. So, about thirty-three million of that is local funds. That's doing a pretty remarkable job of leveraging your local tax dollars with other people's money. And so, this really shows you where that other money's coming from, from Appalachian Power through bills passed, but, you know, by, by delegate Danny Marshall himself to allow Appalachian Power to run, you know, power lines speculatively to the park, to the Virginia Department of Transportation and the improvements they're doing with over eighty-nine million dollars, to Norfolk Southern improving rail lines. And so, again, that's really important for folks to understand that of that total, we have about thirty-three million in that ourselves. And then, of course, this strategy includes the workforce development components that you see there with the sixty-eight million in the scalable advanced manufacturing workforce pipeline. So, that's your middle school and high school programs. And now, we're well over twenty-five million for the state and federal programs as well. So, what that results in is a very busy map. I love this map because at the end of the day, if this map was not busy and you're a client or a prospect, you're looking at it and saying, where is everything? Where's it going to go? And so, this shows you that all of that infrastructure's in place and more importantly, that that infrastructure is not in the development footprint of the site itself. So, again, we're really there. But those are the elements that will be going into the plan. And this will certainly be a open process with a lot of input. And we look forward to, you know, to getting the board's input and hopefully coming up with a plan that we can continue to follow for the years to come. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to ask them, or answer them, excuse me.
Any questions? For Mr. Rowe? Comments?
I don't, I don't really have a question, Matt. I'm all, take the liberty since I only have two meetings left after this one to, to thank you while you're here because you may be on a site visit or something the next two. So, since you're here, I know five or six years ago, we made some decisions as a board under your leadership and guidance from an economic development standpoint. I want to thank you for those and I want to mention some of them because I think they have been instrumental in changing this region. Lot of times, we sit up here as, I mentioned earlier with Mr. Tucker, as elected official and we get pats on the back and we get to stand up on a little stage and say stuff and all that when the real workers and the real heroes are setting out in the audience that have done the true work. And I think about when we decided that we were going to think out of the box and hire Marcus and Milichat. Never been done in Pennsylvania County's history to think outside that box. And when I look at Ringo Park, they certainly had a big part in bringing some of that in. When I look at the two Intertate expansions that have happened in the timeframe I've been on the board, you know, they, they came about not because we were the cheapest that they could get from a rail perspective, but because your team and, of course, the county and the city helped with all that. But we went to bat, pulled out every, I guess, favor we could get at the state level to get them the, the best opportunity. And they said categorically that they would rather spend a little more with the community that showed such interest in keeping them and helping them here. And to see Amthor, a local operation, doing expansion for a second time. And then, I think about the relationships that were developed that Morgan Olson, I mean, if we're honest about it, Morgan Olson's here because of the relationship you all had and the relationship that at that time Brian Ball had with Mr. Poindexter. Again, we get to stand up in front a lot of times and fortunately, I was chairman a few years and was that guy standing up. But I want you to know, I appreciate what you and your department have done for this region. And I'll, I'll tell you, like I told Mr. Tucker when he was up here, I remember in 2018, over at the institute, telling both of you that y'all were Hall of Famers in my book. And that's the way I will leave Pennsylvania County on December the thirty-first as far as the board of supervisors feeling that way about both of you gentlemen and know that y'all transformed this region. And I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate that and hope you continue to do the outstanding work you're doing.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mann.
Any more comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Matt. Remind them about the Tyson's.
Excuse me, sorry. Thank you, Stuart. I think that there was at one point in time a, a mention of Tyson doing a, I guess it was a, be a grand opening event tomorrow. That has been pushed back to the end of November. I want to make sure, I'm pretty sure that an email went out to everyone, you know, letting everyone know of that change, but that's been pushed back so the governor and secretary can, can attend. And that'll be the end of, of November. We'll get, we'll send you a date as that will be an invitation. So, thank you, Stuart, appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Moving to item six B. Ms. Vanderheiden, the two percent salary increase for discussion.
Yes, if you all will remember from last month's meeting, I touched on it just a little, a little bit when we had our public hearing, when we adjusted the 2024 budget, that there would be more changes to come because we had just gotten notice from the state of the state-approved budget for 2024. That did include a two percent across-the-board salary increase for constitutional officers as well as local Department of Social Services. And so, I mentioned to you all that I wanted to do some analysis of the documents when they came in and I've done that. And so, I just wanted to update you that we will be able to have the funds to do an across-the-board two percent for all of our county employees that are on the county's pay plan. So, that would include all your constitutionals, that would include anybody that's in your general fund. We'll also give a two percent to soil and water as well as to solid waste, but the figures that you have in your board packet are just reflective of those in the general fund. Because the other funds will have to support those salary increases because they are enterprise funds. So, just for the general fund, the estimated cost of that two percent is three hundred thousand dollars, but that is offset with revenue from the state of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, it'll be a net impact to the general fund of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we already have that budgeted. You all approved for carryover funds of leftover salary monies. And so, that is already in the FY24 budget. So, I just wanted confirmation from you all that you are okay with that across-the-board increase effective December one and that it will be no negative impact to the general fund. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Thomas?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Warren.
You need to, I make a motion that we approve this.
And it is an item on consent. So, if you didn't approve that, it would just need to be pulled, so.
I'm, let's see, we planned for it, we knew it was coming.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
From a finance committee perspective, Mr. Chairman, we were, we knew it, we knew it.
Okay, good. I just wanted to comment and say that I'm glad it's across the board for everybody because I can remember in my time, it was just, when it come from the state, it was just the state workers and the local people didn't receive it. So, I like it being across the board for everybody.
Well, we do our best to try to prevent that compression issue since we had our salary study done in 2017. And now that we have three of our constitutionals on our pay plan, it makes it very difficult to do that. And so, if we could at all costs try to get that done, it does prevent that and keep everybody's salaries comparable across all the departments.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Vanderheiden. Moving to item six C, the reassessment project update. It's going to be Ms. Budd. Welcome.
Let's turn this down to the short person level. Good afternoon, Chairman Dalton, Vice Chairman Dudley and board members. Today, I'm here to give you a brief update on the reassessment project. Notices went out to the, to the printers last Friday and they're going to be mailed to the property owners on October twenty-fifth. This is a change from our previously anticipated mailing date of October sixteenth. We needed a few more days for it to get everything compiled correctly. The informal appeal, appeals in person will start on November the sixth and go through December fifteenth. However, once people get their notices, and we're expecting, if you have a post office box, you might get that notice by October twenty-seventh, they can go ahead and call Pearson's and set up a, a date for their informal appeals. Pearson is going to be using the community center. Pearson is going to be using the Community Center, Gretna Library, and Mount Herman Library for the informal appeals. We spread it out a little bit through the county to make it a little bit easier on our citizens. Uh, it, people should call no later than November 13th to set up the date for their appointment, for their, uh, in-person appeals. Now, if you're appealing by email or you're appealing by telephone, you can go ahead and do that just as soon as you get your notice letter. Mr. Pearson has assured us that everyone wanting an appeal will be heard, even if he has to go past that December 15th deadline. He will extend it until all, everyone has a chance to be heard. Mr. Pearson will be certifying the values by December 31st and will be able to help the Board of Equalization once they, uh, take place after the first of the year. Okay, here's an example of the notice. This is the front page of the notice. There were several items that the board wanted to be in red, and we have made sure that those items are in red. The most important being that, that the tax rate has not been set at this time and that it will be set after the first of the year during the budget process. Our second page also states that in red, uh, in effort to get the, our citizens' attention drawn to that tax rate. When they see their first page of their notice, they see that amount up there, and it's easy to get confused when you see that 62 cent, uh, per hundred. That's why we went to such extremes, to put that in red, to kind of alleviate a little bit of that concern. Okay, this next slide shows the libraries that we're using in the Community Center. You see, we kind of went straight down the middle of the county. At one time, we were looking at using other libraries as well, and we thought that that was just spreading it out a little too far. Uh, we wanted to kind of keep it centralized in case anybody was short an assessor, they could borrow from another locality, uh, another location and get an assessor there. So we have the Gretna Library in the northern part of the county, the Community Center here in Chatham, and Mount Herman Library on 41. There will be assessors at each of these sites. The libraries have told us the days that their meeting rooms are available. We'll be working with the libraries and be there. Uh, the Community Center has graciously offered to be available every day that we need them to be. In addition, our website is gearing up to be of assistance to our property owners. We have an informational sheet that takes you through the steps of the informal appeal process, as well as a form that can be used to send your request for an email along with any photographs of any damage to the interior of your home directly to Pearson's via email. It's important to be able to send those pictures of the interior of your home because this is information that Pearson's does not have. And mold, faulty electrical boxes, bad plumbing, all of this could affect the appraisal of your home. Uh, Pearson does have three staff members that will, are dedicated to answering the telephones and answering the emails. No county staff person will be taking the calls for Pearson. When people do call into the county, we will be redirecting them to Pearson's because they're the ones with the knowledge of how this appraisal was done. Okay, this is an example of one of the forms that's on our website, and this walks people through the steps. Diana McFarland is also preparing a video that will be very self-explanatory, will be narrated by one of our staff members, and will go into great detail on how to read your property record card, how to go through the appeal process, and what each of the things mean. Some people are more visual, and this may be a greater help to them to have it more or less read to them so that they can follow along. This is an example of a property record card. Within a few days, there's going to be two ways to see your property record card online. The current method allows you to see your property record card that's in place now, and a second option will be added to allow you to see your property record card with the newly assessed information. We think this will be helpful for owners to compare what changed and maybe look at both of them and see something that Pearson's picked up or did not pick up. Each of these opportunities is for a citizen to also find anything they have questions about and go through that informal appeal process. And we're really encouraging people, if they have a question, this is what we have contracted Pearson's for, is to answer these questions for our citizens. And lastly, this doesn't look like a whole lot on this screen, but this has taken a great deal of effort. This is our new GIS web application. And what this is, is you'll be able to click on a parcel, you'll be able to get information about that property, you'll be able to pull up information about that sales study, and then you can go to the neighboring property or a property that you know is similar to yours and look at their information and be able to see what might be different from your home than it might be to your neighbor's home. And it'll give people a way to compare and gather more information. The real goal has been to empower our citizens to be able to find what they need and be able to have knowledgeable answers to their questions. Uh, Mr. Pearson's and his staff continue to work with us daily, um, many times a day, actually, and we're, we're pleased with how they're working with us. They're accommodating us in any way that we can think of, and we're just looking very forward to this being a successful reassessment and a project that will be completed, and we'll be happy to look back on it. It's been kind of painful going through the process, but four years from now, when we do the next reassessment, we'll have this one to look back and have good reference information going forward. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Budd? Mr. Warren?
I don't really have a question in this, uh, I, well, maybe it is a question, Ms. Budd. You know, we've got such a massive county, and certainly, when I look on here and I see the four spots you picked, I mean, they're all wonderful. You did a great job with the whole, whole deal. But it doesn't appear that it's too far when you look at the map, but, but I think about the number of residents and citizens, uh, up in that Westover-Brazewell community, you know, it would have been nice if we could have had a fifth. I mean, you, you got one up at the outer end of Hurt, you know?
And we did look at Brazewell Library, we did consider it. We were just concerned that we were spreading the assessors too thin. Um, we are hoping that people will utilize the telephone and the email. You can call on the phone and go through the same process as you could in person. You will get an assessor, and they will go step by step with you to discuss your property. And we're thinking that might come in handy for some of the elderly people that don't want to get out and go to any of the sites.
Are we fluid enough that if we see that, that Westover-Brazewell area has an influx? I mean, because some people, like you said earlier, are visual learners, learn different, that especially with our seniors, I'm, I'm concerned that they grasp it using the phone and, and all that.
Right.
Are we going to be fluid enough, and is Pearson's group going to be fluid enough if it's determined that the Brazewell community and Westover community really could benefit from having one? Is that something that could possible?
Yes, sir, is, if we could work it with the libraries, uh, because we're utilizing their meeting rooms, but if it got to the point that we saw that we really needed more spaces, I think Mr. Pearson and his group would be able to, um, give us another assessor and put it in another library.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Budd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to item 7. Mr. Hunt, do we have any business we need to discuss, sir?
No, sir, and, uh, we have no closed session today. I apologize for the timing of this, but we thought y'all'd do a little more talking tonight. But, uh, we will adjourn the meeting if that's okay with the board, and then, uh, the meal will come in, and y'all have some, a little break before the business meeting.
Thank you, sir. No more business, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.